It is seven o'clock. Come on, you want to sign my call? Okay. Welcome to the first meeting of the Girls Point Board of Education. It is seven o'clock and the first order of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then our next order of business is to introduce the people that are on the stage tonight. I'm going to start with our new member, trustee Sean Cotton, trustee Ginny, I'm sorry, Valerie St. John, trustee Ginny Jupe, and Ahmed Ismail. I am Colleen Warden. Sitting to my left is Dr. John Dean and secretary Lisa Pappas, trustee David Brumba, Amanda Matheson, our deputy superintendent of business operation, and Dr. Roy Bishop, who's our deputy superintendent. The next thing that we are going to do is do our administration of oath and office of our newly elected trustees. And we are very pleased tonight to have Judge Carl Jarboe, who is the judge of Gross Point Park, do the administration of the oath of office.
Well, thank you. I must say it's a great honor and pleasure for me to be here to swear in newly elected members to the Board of Education of the Gross Point Public School System. You know, it's kind of a promotion for me because for many years I've sworn in the safety patrols at DeFer and Trombley Elementary School. And so I feel this is a little elevation. But you know, I thought about that and there's very many similarities between those roles. Those young children at age 10 and 11 are taking on the first responsibility of service to others. They could stay in their beds a little later on a cold January morning, or they'd have an extra piece of toast at the breakfast table, but they get up early to go and to serve others. And that's the same thing that the school board members do. They could be at home watching the football game, having a beer with their wife, but instead they're here serving others. Those young children, there are parents who they don't even know, who are trusting them with the safety of their own young children, to help them go safely to and from school. Same situation here. Parents who you don't even know are trusting you to keep their children safe, sound, provide a valuable education, and the right outlook for the future. So I commend the newly elected members of the board, I commend the previously elected members of the board, and I commend those previous school board members who have retired, not just recently, but in the past. That public service shows your love and loyalty to the community, and so I commend you. Thank you for your service. Now, we'll swear in, first of all, Mr. Cotton, would you like to come forward, please, sir?
Yes.
And would you raise your right hand? Just a little by the microphone here. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties-
-of the office of member of the Board of Education-
The office of member of Board of Education-
-of the Gross Point Public School System-
Of the Gross Point Public School System-
-according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're a school board member.
Thank you.
Ms. Jupe, if you'd raise your right hand after me and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties-
-of the office of member of the Board of Education-
Of the office of the Board of Education.
-of the Gross Point Public School System-
Of the Gross Point Public School System.
-according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're a school board member.
Thank you very much.
If you'd raise your right hand, Ms. John? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
-of the office of member of the Board of Education-
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
-of the Gross Point Public School System-
Of the Gross Point Public School System.
-according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're a school board member.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, new members, and welcome. I think at this point, Dr. John Dean has something he'd like to say?
It's a brief request. I've had multiple text messages from the media, Mrs. Fan, and if our three new board members, once we excuse the reception, could stand in front of that blue curtain, they'd like to take pictures of you. That was my only comment. Thank you, Ms. Brum.
Okay, and now we are going to have a brief reception. Okay, we are back. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the board agenda for January 4, 2023. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
That's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It passes 7-0. The next item on the agenda is public comments on agenda action items for January 24th, or January 4, 2023. We're going to read our message on the guidelines for public comment. We welcome comments and questions related to matters within the purview of the Board of Education. Prior to addressing the board, we recommend that speakers first discuss their topic and seek resolution with relevant staff and administrators, culminating with the superintendent. The board will not discuss individual or staff matters or pending litigation in this forum, and the chair will rule those comments out of order, as well as any commenters who use inappropriate language such as profanity or other language that disrupts the order of this meeting. Comments are to be addressed to the chair and are limited to three minutes, but we are happy to discuss any matters further outside this formal meeting. When called to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. We only have one public comment on action items for this meeting, and that is Terry Collins, if you could come to the podium.
Good evening, Terry Collins, 1222 Harvard, Gross Point Park. First, I'd like to say welcome to the new school board members for the first time in a long time. Many of us in this community have faith that the district will now return to a focus on academic excellence. So why is it so important to elect the right person to be board president? All we have to do is review what's happened over the last three years in this school district to understand the problems that come from a lack of leadership at the board level. In the summer of 2020, our former board president failed to direct our superintendent to develop a plan to return our students to the classroom after COVID. By the time the new school board finally voted to return our kids to the classroom by March 2021, nearly 529 students had left our district. Instead of recognizing the failures of the past board president, the new board president failed to implement any plan to stop the bleeding. Instead, our kids spent the next 13 months masked while kids just 10 miles away in Macomb County were unmasked the entire school year. Even after losing another 311 students by June 2022, our board president again failed to take any action to address enrollment losses. The last 30 months of a leadership vacuum have left this district down over 840 students with a resulting fund equity loss of over $8 million. And what of our fall 2022 head count? The only board member who bothered to ask about head count last fall was consistently shut down by our board president. We cannot have a board president who stifles other board members' questions or requests. Strong board leadership is critical to attracting talent to this district at all levels. In the spring of 2021, the lack of leadership by our board president was a key reason that our superintendent search was so underwhelming. Why were the choices of a district that should be at the top of every superintendent's job search so limited? Why have so many teachers and administrators chosen to leave our district over the last few years? I believe this is directly related to a leadership vacuum in our district, this much change. A board president must take control of our district finances and be committed to financial accountability. We cannot afford the type of decisions made by this board in the last year alone that saw the district give away district resources to the lowest bidder while cutting contracts to the highest bidder that had consistently underperformed. These two decisions alone cost the district over $700,000. Finally, it is critical that our new board president recognize the importance of establishing SMART goals for our district. If this means scrapping the strategic plan and starting over, so be it. Specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely, not just for the administration, but for the board and the district as a whole. The new board president must support developing measurable goals for our superintendent, administrators, teachers, and the board itself before another contract is extended or person is hired. First and foremost, the vision and mission statement of our district must reflect the board president who's committed to academic excellence. Please vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that is the end of our public comments for action items. So we move on to the next agenda item, and that is the organizational items, and that is the election of the officers. And according to 5.1.1, the first thing we do is the nomination of an election of the president.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion nominating Ahmed Ismail as the new president of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there going to be some discussion?
I'll start since I nominated him two years ago, and I'm very happy and proud to nominate him again tonight. Trustee Ismail has been the longest-serving board member, at least on the current board, and I don't know over the course of many years, but he's been on the board many times over the years, has a very long breadth of experience on the board. He's actually consult, serves as a consultant to other school boards. He has taught sessions at the Michigan Association of School Boards, and there's nobody on this board that has the length, the depth of knowledge on school finance. He had his own children here in our school district, and he was a tireless volunteer in our school. Many people don't know that, but he has given tirelessly to our school district, has been in our buildings, is very intimately familiar with everything from facilities, our finance system, knows many of the staff and students. And in the course of his business, he has met and photographed many, along with his wife, many of our graduates at both schools. So I can't think of a better, more professional, and more experienced person to be the new president.
Are there any other comments? Go ahead.
So I agree that, I know that trustee Ismail has a lot of experience with Massey trainings and a lot of background in school board things. My only concern would just be attendance record and the fact that we need a board president who is really consistent. I agree with Mr. Collins that the lack of leadership in the past has caused some board meetings to get a little out of control, and I would really like our meetings to have a really consistent leader who's there every time and is willing to make sure that the attitude of both the audience and the fellow board members is respectful and that we get discussions done in an orderly manner. So if trustee Ismail thinks that he can do that and be present at all of the meetings for the next year, then that is great. I just, I'd like to hear from him if that's like, because that's a really hard job. So I know it's very stressful. I saw from President Hurd that it was very stressful, so I'd like to hear from him, too.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to make a comment?
Well, I would like to make a comment. I agree with Ms. St. John. I went through the minute meetings, the meetings of the minutes for the last couple of years, and there's been a significant number of missed meetings by trustee Ismail. And I'm concerned, the board president, I know firsthand from being vice president and serving with President Hurd, that it's a significant time commitment. I mean, I think it's almost a full-time job. I remember the tasks that Joe had to do and the amount of time he spent on all the things he had to do in the district, the different meetings he had to go to, the different events he had to attend. And I'm very concerned that if Mr. Ismail is president, that that might be lacking because there were significant numbers of meetings that were missed by trustee Ismail. So I'm concerned about that, and I think that might be an issue with leadership. So that's my comment. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
To answer your question, hips working, knees are working, and doctor says I'm okay, so I don't see an issue with it. Thanks, Valerie.
Okay, I think we should do a roll call vote for this, and we will start with trustee Cotton.
Yea.
Okay. Ms. St. John?
Yeah.
Ms. Jupe?
Yea.
Mr. Ismail?
Yes.
I am Colleen Warden. My vote is no. Ms. Pappas?
Yea.
Yes.
Okay. The ayes have it, so President Ismail, you are now the president. I'm going to hand the gavel over to you.
Okay, thank you. The next office that we have up for election is vice president. Do I have any motion?
I'll move to nominate Colleen Warden again, since she's served as vice president for the past few years.
Support?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Pappas for vice president.
Well, first, we have to, we have to, discussion on Ms. Warden's nomination. Any discussion at all?
Since I made the motion to nominate, I'll just say that since she's been the vice president, she's got the experience. And the reason I thought that she would be a good president was because I've seen her step in when the president has been absent a couple of times at board meetings and run the meeting effectively and have a good knowledge of Robert's Rules of Order, which I think is important to make sure that our meetings run smoothly. So I think it would just be good for the consistency of the board.
Do we want to take a vote on that?
The only other thing I would say is I know that we've got a lot of turnover in the board over the last, you know, two years, right? So having consistency in leadership is important, but over the last two years, I've also always supported the president's choice for their cabinet, for their own officers. So I think, you know, trustee Warden is very capable and would serve very well as vice president, but I'd welcome trustee Ismail, or President Ismail's thoughts on the matter.
I think that Ms. Warden would do fine. I think frankly anybody here would do fine as vice president. I don't, I'd have an issue on that. I think we'll take a vote on it and see where we're at. Mr. Cotton?
No.
Ms. St. John?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Pappas?
No.
Yes.
And I'm a no. So that leaves us 4-3. Do I have another nomination for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Pappas for vice president.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, support, any discussion?
I would just bring up the same concern about missed meetings in the past and that the secretary, or sorry, the vice president would be stepping in for the president, and then if there were ever a meeting where both the president and the vice president were not able to make it due to whatever concerns, that's not a judgment on either of you. I know that there's been personal and family issues going on. That's not, you know, it's okay, but like, it's just, it's a big time commitment. So what would be the protocol in that case if the president and vice president didn't come to the same meeting as-
And treasurer would then-
Then the treasurer is next? Okay, that's good to know. I just know there were several meetings in the past two years where neither of these trustees have shown up, so that would be my main concern.
Duly noted. Any other comments?
I just, to address, I mean, any absences I've had have been related to illnesses out of my control, especially a year ago, and personal family situation that is pretty stable at the moment, so it's kind of-
Please stay that way.
Hopefully it stays that way, and it's not something under my control, but I want to make it clear that of the times I've been intimately aware of, when trustee Ismail or myself have had absences, it has never been for anything that we just didn't show up. It was, there were some things that came up that are, you know, out of really any control, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll start with Mr. Brumba.
Yes.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
No.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. St. John?
No.
Ms. Jupe? Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we're 5-2 there. Congratulations, Ms. Pappas.
Congratulations to you.
Next, we have the office of treasurer. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sean Cotton.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I nominate him because his experience with finance is far more in-depth than I think anybody sitting on this board. He's had a lot of experience with businesses and spreadsheets, and I think his wisdom on that area is invaluable, and I would be happy to see him in that role.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No comments, just would welcome Mr. Cotton's, trustee Cotton's thoughts on the position and what his, I don't know, I don't know, plans and intentions, sounds too formal, but what your thoughts on the position are and why you're interested in it.
I would be happy to accept the nomination. Thank you.
Well, frankly, I can't think of a better money man for the district, so I'd like to see you in that position as well. Any other comments? We'll start with Mr. Cotton.
Yes.
Ms. St. John?
Yes.
Ms. Jupe?
Yes.
Mr. Brumba?
Yes.
And Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so you're a 7-0. Next, excuse me, next we have the office of secretary. Do I have a motion?
I move to nominate Ginny Jupe as secretary of the board.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I would just pose the same question to trustee Jupe, you know, being a new member of the board, if you could talk a little bit about your interest and thoughts about the position.
Well, I've served as secretary for the last four years on a condo board in Florida, and I have experience as a secretary, and I will follow through.
Start taking notes.
I'm good at that.
Any other comments? We'll start with Mr. Cotton.
Yes.
Ms. St. John?
Yes.
Ms. Jupe?
Yes.
Mr. Brumba?
Yes.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
No.
And I'm a yes, so that's a 6-1. Next on our agenda is the declaration of board member compensation. Dr. Dean, if you could just do a quick lead-in on that?
I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Matheson, or-
Oh, there you go.
Well, I can give it a try, but she'll correct me if I go wrong. For each board meeting, board members are entitled to, I believe it's $30 per meeting of compensation. It's actually not treated as W-2 income, it's 1099 income, all those sorts of things. And typically this time it doesn't require a vote, but just for the record, what board members want done with that compensation, they can accept it, they can decline it, or they can like note to have it spent on something else. And I've seen all different versions of all those different things, as I know you have, Mr. Ismail. Did I come close to summarizing it, you think?
You got it.
Okay.
So we'll go down the list, and Mr. Cotton, where would you like your compensation going?
I'd like for it to go to the robotics program itself.
Duly noted. Ms. St. John?
I've discussed with the communications team that I would like to see closed captioning services to improve accessibility for our meetings, to make sure that everybody can interact with the meetings from home, so I have asked that my stipend be given to defray the costs of closed captioning the meetings, which will hopefully happen soon.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Ms. Jupe?
I'd like to see mine go to the special education program.
Okay. And Mr. Brumba?
For the last two years, I've donated my compensation to the early education program because they don't have a PTO. I understand that it might be changing, so if they do have a PTO, I would love to direct my compensation there. If not, then to the ECC program. It's a real cornerstone of growing the district and, you know, growing enrollment and getting our kids ready to learn, and I hope to see good things in the next two years for ECC.
That's great, thank you. Ms. Pappas?
I'd like to continue. For the last two years, I've given mine, split it between the North and South high school choirs, and I'd like to continue that.
That's great, I'm sure they appreciate that. Ms. Warden?
I'm going to continue to donate mine to the Parcells PTO. They do a lot of great things for our teachers and raise money for events and that kind of thing, so I'm going to continue doing that.
That's great, and I will take mine and donate it, actually, Ms. St. John, your idea is great, I'll chip mine in as well, so we'll get that closed captioning going. That's great. Okay, we're all set as far as compensation goes. The next item is regular board meeting calendar. Dr. Dean, do you want to do a lead-in on that?
Absolutely. Typically, at the organizational meeting, the Board of Education approves the calendar, and it's kind of odd, for lack of a better term, because it's a calendar based on the calendar year, meaning the whole year, which does not coincide obviously with our school year. It's one of the few things we do that's calendar year basis versus school year basis, based on questions and feedback from board members. I was asked, or administration was asked to put together three calendars, they were all included in the packet, and were actually provided to the board members and board members elect, I believe, back in mid-December, just for the community. They are, version one is maintaining our current calendar, the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Version two is the first and third Tuesdays, because I was asked for that, and then I was also asked for a second and fourth Tuesdays. And for each of those three calendars, we kind of put together like, I think about a conflict analysis of what's going on in the district and what's the issue with doing this. And some of those are way beyond our control, like, you know, sometimes a Tuesday might fall during spring break, beyond our control. There are other instances where we might have situations of this space or another space not being used, at least one of the calendars would bump into South's, like, graduation backup rain date. So I tried to note all those in there. I did work with our PAC team to try to identify all them and our communications team.
Well, I have to tell you personally, I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, and do we have a motion in regard?
I have a motion to keep it the same as Monday, the same schedule that we have, and I'm happy to give my reasons for that.
Is there support to that?
So is that version one that we're looking at, or would that be what we've usually done, is the second and fourth Mondays?
I believe it's version one.
Version one, yes.
I would second that because that's what everyone is used to in the district, so.
Okay. Any comment?
I have a comment. I know we went back and forth about this last year, and I know that one of the reasons why people suggested that we changed the meeting date was because it conflicted with our six municipalities. And I did some research, and I sent this email to all of the board, and actually, we don't conflict with the majority of the municipalities. Four of our six municipalities, that's Gross Point Woods, Harper Woods, Gross Point, and let's see, Gross Point Shores, do not conflict at all. I think three of those municipalities meet on the first and third Monday, and then Gross Point Shores meets on Tuesday. So that leaves us with Gross Point Park, and they meet on the second or the fourth Monday of the month, so that would only be one conflict for Gross Point Park. And then Gross Point Farms meets on the second Monday of the month, so there's only one Monday of the month that would conflict with that. Additionally, if we did move it to a Tuesday, which has been suggested, it would conflict with Gross Point Shores, because that's the day that they meet. So I know that that was an original reason that was raised, but in fact, that's not really a reason, because it doesn't, there's not really much conflict at all. And in fact, it would conflict another conflict with one of our municipalities, the Shores. And then the calendars and the information that Dr. Dean prepared for us, it shows that the Tuesdays are busy days in the district, sports performances, I mean, I know that from having a child and having, you know, obviously, we all have friends that have kids in the schools, and the reason why the administration and the district has met on Mondays for so long is because it's the least likely day to conflict with all the other things in the district. So I understand that it's a new board, there's new faces, but what I'm advocating for is not just to change just for change's sake. If we don't have a good reason to change it, then I think we should- reason to change it, then I think we should respect the teachers, administrators, and administration who have specifically chosen this date because it doesn't conflict with the other things in the district. So that's why I think we should leave it as is.
Any other comments?
I would put in, it's not just a conflict with city councils, and I think, you know, we have to be mindful, too, that there are people that do try to attend our meetings. I mean, I've spoken since I was elected two years ago to people that were unhappy with the Monday nights, and when you have a lot of things on the same night, there's a lot of things that go on on Monday nights as well, and suddenly you've got every Monday tied up, you know, if you want to be, you know, active in a city council situation and in a Board situation. And we certainly have had people that have voiced concerns about not being able to always to come to the school district meetings on Mondays because of that conflict. But I have a different concern above that. I think the Monday date is a very difficult date, because it's the start of the week. And what happens is that a lot of times, and we certainly in the previous Board had a lot of extenuating situations going on, but it was very hard to connect with Board members over the weekend. And there were people going out of town, and then suddenly we're on a workday and we have a meeting on Monday night, and we're not able to make those connections to fellow Board colleagues to discuss or raise questions about something we were voting on. And I certainly had many times difficulties connecting with people to discuss important and time-sensitive issues. And I think moving it to Tuesday gives you another business day. People are back in town. Weekends are tough. If you have kids, you know, people are running around with sports activities and all sorts of things, church services, and there's only so many hours in the day. And I think giving that extra day during the week, I think, really gives a little bit of time to address things, and sometimes things crap up on a Friday, and so suddenly we have something that might need to be discussed, and it's, everybody is, you know, racing against the clock on a Monday to address issues. And I've, I mean, I've been on the phone at work, you know, with Dr. Dean, with Board members on my lunch hour, trying to, you know, get a quick, you know, discussion about an issue before we vote that night. And so I think the Tuesday is much better served to good governance. It gives another workday in the week to address issues that come up, and then have that next day to do that vote. And I'm highly in favor of a Tuesday schedule for that reason.
Any other comments? St. John?
Yeah, I hear all those points. As a Girls Point Park resident, I've also, I was able to make one city council meeting all year when we just had the one Board meeting over the summer. In July, I think, I was able to go to the city council meeting and ask them to move their meetings, and they said, "We already considered that when we made our schedule." So it was worth a try. But, so I do hear you on that and on the giving us an extra day to talk to administration about our concerns. Just looking at the version two and three calendars, all the things that have already been planned for the Brown Elm multipurpose room, I'm wondering if we could perhaps continue the second and fourth Mondays through the rest of the school year, and then change it as, like, in the summer to be on Tuesdays. And that way, people who are planning to use the Brown Elm multipurpose room or planning concerts and things like that could, would know that from now on, the Board meetings are going to be on Tuesdays and have that in the back of their minds when they're scheduling things. And we wouldn't be disrupting all of the things, because I mean, like, we've got eighth grade promotion at all three middle schools, we've got concerts that are supposed to be in here, and so we would have to use an alternate location or move our meeting again. It seems like a lot to do on relatively short notice, considering how much planning has to go into district-wide types of events. So I'm wondering if we could, if other people are really determined to meet on Tuesdays, maybe we could make that go into effect in the summer, so that it doesn't disrupt our teachers and staff and some of the students.
Okay. Any other comments?
I will say that I had a lot of conflicts with trying to do business with the park and go to their meetings, as well as the school board, and I saw a lot of comments online, frustration from community members. I saw your comments to that, David. And so I looked at it as a way to solve what I saw as a frustration in community, because the school encompasses all of the points in Harper Woods. And if we could make one change and take, make sure that we don't conflict with the Shores, having community members come here, I think, would be really important. I think that we could probably work through these few conflicts for the second and third, second and fourth Tuesdays, and try and make it, I mean, I want to make the middle school graduation. So I mean, if we could work through that calendar, I would be for that calendar.
Okay. Mr. Brumbow?
I would agree. I wanted to have this discussion two years ago, because I think that, you know, civic engagement is the cornerstone of a strong democracy, and I've served overseas in some countries that have been in rough shape, and I think that providing everybody every opportunity to participate in local government's important. We have here tonight a prospective Eagle Scout who's working on citizenship in the community, right? And I think for me, that hits home my own journey through that process to learn about, you know, local, state, and federal government, and how everything fits together, and the importance of making those opportunities for people to be engaged. And I would agree with trustee St. John that, you know, this is not an emergency, you know? So if it would please the Board to delay implementation until June, as we had originally discussed, I think, two years ago as a potential option, or as trustee Cotton just mentioned, hey, you know, let's look at where we've got conflicts and move those particular meetings from Tuesday to Monday. You know, there are different ways to fix this that will create those opportunities for civic engagement without creating conflicts. So, and I do think trustee Warden's point is right, that there aren't a ton of conflicts, but those do conflict with, you know, every municipal meeting for the farms and every municipal meeting for the parks. So I don't want to overstate the conflict, but I also don't want to understate that. So I think that looking at a Tuesday meeting that does not conflict with the Shores, that's either implemented, kind of following, once these conflicts clear, or can be deconflicted by moving those meetings that do conflict, would be a good course of action.
Okay. So, any other comments on Ms. Warden's motion?
I just have one more comment. The thing that I want to remind the Board is that we are here to serve at the pleasure of the Girls Point public school system. That's why we were elected. And where I know that is important to engage in civic duty and interact with our municipal governments, our first obligation is to the Girls Point public school system. And we've been given a calendar, as well as events, and specifically, we've been told that Tuesdays are bad days for sports and for events. And so I take issue with us trying to accommodate, you know, two meetings a month from, you know, two municipalities, especially when our obligation is to the students of this district, the parents of this district, who are now going to find themselves in conflicts themselves because they can't attend meetings because there are events, performances, and sports. So I also want to remind everyone that we knew when we were elected that the meetings are on Monday nights, and so I don't know why we are trying to fix something that's not broken.
Okay. Any other comments on Ms. Warden's motion? Okay. I'll make a quick comment. While we're serving the students of the community, we also serve the entire community, and we can't forget the people that frankly are in the audience here now, and the people that want to be involved in their cities. And I think that Dr. Dean went over and above board when he came up with what I thought was a great solution, which was version three. But that's my personal comments. We'll take a vote. All in favor of Ms. Warden's motion, say aye.
Aye.
A procedural question. So if we wanted to adapt some kind of a hybrid or a delayed implementation schedule, would we vote?
We can do that as a second motion.
We would vote no, and then have a new motion.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have aye, two, and nays? All against?
Nay.
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 So that's, I'm sorry, David, what was your?
Nay.
Nay. So we have a 5-2. So version one is out?
So I'd like to move that we keep version one until June, and then we can vote on either version two or three, so that the people who have already worked their schedules around Mondays, like, primarily, I'm thinking of the teachers and staff who are obligated or generally expected to be here, have already blocked out Mondays for the foreseeable future. But, you know, if we give them enough advance notice, they can certainly start blocking out Tuesdays. But to switch it, you know, with just a week or two notice is going to really mess up a lot of planning, and especially for these district-wide events that we have noted in the calendar. It doesn't seem like we have any district-wide events conflicting for next fall, because we don't have anything definitely on the books for next fall. So I think it'd make it a lot easier. So I'd like to move that we maintain version one until June.
I would second that motion.
And then is it version three that does not conflict with the Shores, that we would be?
Sure, let's do that.
Adopting after?
So my motion will be version one until June.
That is a question, like, is that the one that does not conflict with the Shores?
That's the one that doesn't conflict with the Shores.
Okay, thank you.
Version one until June, after which we adapt version three.
Any comment?
Does that make sense, Colleen?
Yes, but are you, are you going to make two separate motions? Are you going to?
It sounds like we like version three better, as far as if we're going to vote on Tuesdays. So, just for clarity's sake, I'll say my motion is version one until June, after which we would adopt version three.
I'm wondering, President Ishmael, if we have a discussion maybe on the version two and three and get a clear motion on that first, and find that calendar, then revisit this motion to adapt it as a separate, so it's not confusing as to, because we're kind of...
From a clarity standpoint, it may be good for Dr. Dean. Can you give us a brief synopsis of two and three, as far as what bottlenecks we would have with either one of them?
I'd be happy to do that. So, two and three are meetings on Tuesdays. Version two is meetings on first and third Tuesdays. Version three is meetings on second and fourth Tuesdays. And I'm just explaining this for the community, because they don't necessarily have the same docs, so I know I'm repeating some things. There are some things with Tuesdays that are challenging, that are beyond our control, so that is the most common day for non-football-related athletics. It's just how it works, we can't control that. But putting that aside, first and third Tuesdays, we've structured some things we have choices over to keep them off of Mondays. In terms of, from January to this June, the first and third Tuesdays have a lot of challenges. Some of those are beyond our control, like, one of them falls during, like, mid-winter break, like a beyond our control thing. It does bump, it bumps into July 4th, beyond our control thing. It does bump into graduation and honors night, South Senior Honors Night for May 16th, it would bump into, because that's a third Tuesday. And it would bump into Tuesday, June 6th, because that's the rain date for South's graduation. You can't move it to the Monday, June 5th, because that's actual graduation. In my humble opinion, first and third Tuesdays is hardest, like, harder of those two. Version three, which is second and fourth Tuesdays, we have some location challenges, like this coming Tuesday, we can't meet it here, but we've already got a solution for that. And there's a couple of location challenges. The only date that we need to move, and Mr. Cotton mentioned it, the first Tuesday of June is June 13th, which is eighth grade promotion, and I think he has an interest in us not meeting that date, and I say that with a smile. So administration had recommended, if you adopted that calendar, that you actually meet on Monday, June 12th, because I know that would be a Monday date, but you can't move it up back a week, or you bump into South's graduation again. So like, it's probably Monday, June 12th, or nothing like that week, if it makes sense. So that's my brief summary of the two calendars.
So if I could make a synopsis, if you had your druthers of version two or three, three has less conflicts?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing. Okay.
I would also, I'd like to ask, will these issues go into next year, for version three? Or is that something that if we adopt a hybrid, you can take care of a lot of these conflicts?
I can take care of a lot of them.
But not sports?
Pardon me, not sports, but like, in particular, the performing arts pieces that involve, like, this space or other spaces, we have more control over those. Like, for example, of middle school promotion night, we'll just pick a day other than Tuesday. Like, we could have picked Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday that week. We picked Tuesday nine months ago, when we thought the meeting would be on Monday. We would miss that moving forward. So some of the things we can't control, like, you know, whether Election Day falls next year, it doesn't, for what it's worth. But like, we can't control those, but I think, Mr. Cotton, you were asking about, can we control some? I think we could.
That would be my preference, to give the district more time to adapt for the things that we can control, and for the people who are expected to be here at most meetings, teachers, staff, administration, to start to think about, okay, now Tuesdays after June are going to be the day that I need to block out on my calendar, whereas right now, I assume most of them have got Mondays on their calendar, and maybe they decided that their kids' activities would only be on Tuesdays, and they wouldn't do anything on Mondays. And to switch it right now would be disruptive to a lot of families' lives. So that would be my reasoning for having, continuing as we've been doing through June.
One of the things that I like about the idea of delaying implementation of it, too, is moving to Tuesday helps minimize the amount of kind of unpaid weekend time that our staff has to do. Because I know that, like, you know, administration works much more than 40 hours a week. And I know that if we're meeting on Monday, that they are going to be working over the weekend, because I've seen it for two years, being on the Board, and prior to that. So I do like the idea of moving to Tuesday to give them some, you know, regular work time to handle regular work issues. But just like trustee St. John said, if a lot of them have made plans that are going to be disrupted for the remainder of the school year by moving it from Monday, then I think, I think doing a phased implementation is a good approach. It solves a lot of problems without a lot of disruption.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll take a roll call vote on this. Ms. St. John's proposal that we stick with Mondays until June, and then switch to version three thereafter. Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. St. John?
Yes. Wait, can I clarify something? So the one that we're choosing in the hybrid is the one where we would conflict, that's the one where we would be meeting on the same day as the Girls Point Shores, correct?
No, the second and fourth, they meet on the third.
I don't know when the Shores meets. I'm sorry, you looked at me.
Okay.
I didn't have it in front of me.
I spot-checked like four or five dates on the calendar, and it didn't look like there was a conflict for version three. But I've just been doing it on the computer now, I wouldn't want to say with certainty. But I believe you had said that you checked and it doesn't conflict.
Right, and they were, they met on the third.
Okay.
Third Tuesday.
So it sounds like version three conflicts with no city council meetings.
No city council meetings.
And moving forward will conflict very little with school district things. So, yes.
Okay. Yes, yes. Ms. Jupe?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brumbow?
Yes.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
No.
And I am a yes. That passes 6-1.
Mr. Ishmael, if I may for just a second, just for community clarity for the community. Oh, I'm sorry, I was stuck on version three, and I was going to say the meeting's going to have to be somewhere else. I apologize. Our Monday meeting, two, three workdays from now, will be here on this stage.
You got it.
Okay. I apologize, and too many calendars flying through my brain.
Look at...
Can I get a point of clarity on this, when we're going to pivot? So are we going to keep the Monday schedule through June?
That's correct.
And then July, we pivot to Tuesday, is that?
The one thing, and I think we can work with the new Board president, is because we typically only have one Board meeting in July.
Right.
We did identify a specific date for that here. If the majority of the Board wants a different Tuesday in July, other than the Fourth of July, I think the Board can make a decision around that. And that's the easiest month for us to deal with.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dean.
Thank you.
Do we still have the meeting happening next Tuesday?
It's coming Monday.
It's coming Monday, okay.
It would be Monday. Okay. Next up is item 5.4, Resolution of Continuance of Funds and Designation of Signatories on Accounts. That Ms. Matheson item?
Yes, thank you. Just as a standard item that we put on the Board after the beginning of every new year of the organizational meeting, so on PDF page three, you will see the list of all of the funds that the operating district and then look at the list of checking and signatures that the operating, the Board Treasurer's name is on as a signer, so we can review through our base and get that information updated, as well as the signature that we're attaching.
Ready to sign, Mr. Cotton?
I am.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
In support? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. Opposed? Seven, zero. Five, four. Next, we have board requests, new business. I have one item here, and it involves policy 1 dot 1 eight committees. And I would like to, I would like to have four committees established that we could get working. First would be the Facilities and Finance Committee. Second is a Policy and Contracts Committee. Third is a Curriculum Committee. And fourth is a Community Engagement Committee. And I'm hoping there's support for that.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Do we have comment?
Would it be possible to have a discussion on Monday about the committee structure and what your intent for the, the different committees would be, just so you can kind of unpack that a little bit?
Not a problem at all.
Explain to the community?
Not a problem at all.
I think that'd be a great discussion.
Yeah, my request would be to get that in the board packet to, for the new committees. I'd wanna know what they were about, since they've been here.
Okay, not a problem at all. Okay, do we have any other new business?
Well, do we need to vote on that, on your motion?
Um-
To create these committees?
He's gonna bring more information on Monday, and then we vote on it.
Right, but we have a motion.
Oh, okay, let's, let's, yeah, we do. You're right, let's-
Do you, do you wanna table it?
I'll withdraw that motion, I'll withdraw the motion, and I'll just put it on Monday's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business or, new business or board requests?
Yes, I think that it's important for a board to have its own unique legal counsel. So I move to begin interviewing law firms to explore a legal counsel that's just specific to the board.
Support.
I, I would just make the same request, that when we're talking about board requests and new business, that we put it on the calendar for a first read and have a discussion about it before we, before we vote on new business. So, I, interesting idea, but I would like to hear more about it, if that's, Mr. Cotton's amenable to that.
It's up to Mr. Cotton.
I, I mean, I think it speaks for itself. I think that, I, I don't know what else I'd put on there, that, but that we need a law firm that we could ask questions of, that's unique to the board. There's a lot of issues with boards these days, and having that kind of, uh, access, I think is important. I think it's important for governance.
I think the biggest concern I would have would be the cost, is how much it's gonna cost, and is that gonna be a district line item?
It would be, but it would be the same, I think, as if you're accessing the law firm that's for the entire school system. You'd have the same unique questions. It would just be, would you go to your law firm for the board, or for the entire school district?
I, I guess I'd like to know, I mean, the, the, the Girls Point public school system has actually a couple of different law firms. One is, um, you know, asking general questions. We also have a, a law firm that does our real estate. Um, we also have a law firm that does our labor, our labor law as well. So I guess I would like to know, why, why does the board need a separate law firm? I mean, we, we, we act in, in, in whole, on behalf of the school system, and we have a, an attorney that, that works on behalf of the school system. So why does the board need its own separate entity or a separate law firm?
I would just say it's good governance.
Why, why so?
Well, I think there's a lot of issues that boards run into, and having your own access where you could, uh, call that attorney and ask him the questions. I'd like to know how many times you talked to Clark Hill.
How many times I talk to Clark Hill?
Yes, you've been vice president.
Well, I mean, that's not my role to, to engage with the, the legal counsel. I mean, we, we act as a board as a whole, we do our business at the board. And so, the law firms that the Girls Point Public School System has retained, is through the administration, and they act on the best interests of the school system. So I don't know why I would need to talk to Clark Hill.
Well, I mean, to answer the question differently, we have had a number of closed sessions over the last two years where we've consulted with district council. Um, I'm just trying to think. I think the only thing that would be analogous to us seeking outside counsel from a, from another attorney would be when we considered replacing Neola as our policy provider, because that's a, a group of, uh, policy specialists and attorneys that we didn't believe were, um, providing the best possible policy manual for the district. And we consulted with Clark Hill, and I believe that there was another, uh, one or two law firms that we sought bids from. So I, I know that at, in the past, when, in, under specific issues, the board has sought out alternative legal opinions. I know during the Massey debate, the board sought alternative opinions from Clark Hill, from the Massey Council Attorney, like Staff Attorney. Um, but yeah, I guess, I guess this is, like I had said initially, I would rather have a presentation on, um, kind of what the intent is, you know, we have to think about, um, the potential costs associated with it. Would it be on a retainer basis? Would it be on a per hour, like billable hour basis? Who would be the people we would want to look at as potential attorneys? You know, how does that align or not align with the existing arrangements we have with other legal firms? I, I guess I just would like to explore it a little more and not put, uh, people on the spot to answer questions during new business.
The other thing I would like to comment on is that, I'm sorry.
Can I run the meeting?
Sure.
That would be great. Did anybody else have any other comments?
I, I do have one question I'd like answered. Um, so if the, like if you are able to bring it to a presentation on Monday, another thing that I'd like to know is how many other school districts do this? Like if this is a common practice for a lot of school boards to have their own council separate from the district, or if that's not something, because if it's not something that anybody else does, I don't see why we would be unique. But if it's a common practice among other school boards, then I'd definitely be open to looking at it. So that's, that's just something I don't know, that I would like to learn about.
Ms. Ju, did you have any comments?
Um, I don't have any comments at this moment.
Okay, Ms. Pappas?
I just, I wanna chime in on this. Um, there's a lot going on with school boards nationally, across the country. And I think, if, we're not looking at, at, you know, spending extra money. Certainly, I've seen the Clark Hill billings, and we, you know, spent a significant amount of money with one firm. I think there's an advantage to having a separation of powers in consulting and legal issues, because the issues that the board might be involved in, at some point, um, there's a lot of liability issues going on with school boards across the country. And, um, you know, when you, when you come up here and every person here, of course, you know, generously gave their compensation over, we're not sitting here to make any money, we're not getting anything out of, you know, sitting here at this table. But we do take on a significant amount of risk, as personal, you know, private citizens that just wanna do right by our schools. And sometimes, the school board's interests are different than that of the administration. Hopefully not, you know, not that often, but there are cross issues that go on. And I think with the increased amount of scrutiny on school boards and liability issues, and school boards are getting sued, I think that it is really important, as a matter of protection, for the people sitting on this stage, that we have a lawyer that we can consult, that is not wrapped in with the administration. Because sometimes the administration wants to do one thing, and then the board is caught with one answer. And, I mean, I certainly was involved in a, in a situation, you know, a year or so ago, um, where the, the, you know, I didn't agree with the, the council that we got from our, our legal council, as a school board member, and I got conflicting opinions from lawyers outside of, um, the district. And it, it, it was a conflict of interest, it was, there was a huge conflict of interest, actually, with the firm that represented us, um, chiming in on that issue. And I, I think it's really important, and I think it, it, good governance, because, sitting here as a trustee, we vote on things, but there's a lot of things that go on in the day-to-day running of the operations of the district. We can't possibly be aware of every single thing that goes on. That's, and that's why we hire a superintendent, and we support him, and we try to help our administrators do their job. But when it comes down to, you know, when the rubber hits the road, our, our reputations, our, um, lives are intertwined with this board. And it is a legal position. It's not something I think a lot of people talked about, but in, if you read any news article, and I'm like a news junkie, I'm reading articles all the time about situations, you know, coming up in school boards. And I think having, diversifying the legal counsel, it's not a matter of hiring another firm and spending a ton of more money, that's not the issue. It's simply not having all the eggs going in one basket, so that we have somebody representing the district, but the school board has their own representation as well. Because, and they can work collaboratively, we're not looking, you know, at a, in a fighting sort of situation, but it's, it's really a legal protection with, um, the current environment, where school boards are getting, getting sued, um, with increasing frequency. And it, it's, I'll tell you what, it, it takes a lot to sit up here on this stage, it takes a lot to run for office, and there's been some pretty concerning issues, just, you know, in the way that school board trustees have been treated. Um, and so I, I think that there's, in the current climate that we exist in, um, I wish it weren't so, it wasn't like that, I don't think, 20 years ago. But I think in the current climate, I think, for our protection, I think it would be very good to diversify our legal counsel and have somebody that would handle board-specific issues in the administration, have, have one that covers the school district and administration. I just think it, it is good governance.
Dr. Dean?
Um, I don't wanna weigh in, because I, I do believe this is a board opinion, a board choice. I would just add this, our attorneys don't represent the administration. And I, I just heard that a couple of times. The attorneys represent the school district, and the school district's represented by the seven board members, and you've appointed me as the superintendent. So when, like, for example, when they provide a communication to any attorney, the, the privilege is with the board, because you represent the community. I think that's really important. We wouldn't, we can have more firms, we have several firms, we can have more firms. But I'm, in the board feels they need to have private, or separate counsel for their own things, I understand that, but I, Clark Hill, Miller Johnson's another firm we use, we use, I forget, Amanda Van Dusen Works, I'm blanking momentarily.
Mary Canfield.
Miller Canfield. They don't represent administration, they represent the district. So I just want that clarity out there for board members. It's not like dueling, John has his lawyer and we have our lawyers. I just wanted to provide that clarity. The board makes this choice, I'm comfortable with that, but I just wanna make that clarity public.
Okay. Ms. Warden, do you have any final comments?
Yes, I do. Um, you know, I was a municipal attorney for 16 years before I was a prosecutor. And this idea that we're gonna get sued, and we have, there's, you know, subject to that, I mean, we're, we're elected officials, we're not private citizens when we sit up here, and we're protected from governmental immunity, so that's not an issue. But what I would suggest justice doing, before we try to, you know, pick up another law firm to represent our interests, is that we all attend of the onboarding on January 25th, where we learn the role of the board. I, I've heard the same comments up here, and as Dr. Dean pointed out, we, the, these law firms represent the district. They don't represent John, or Amanda, or Roy, they represent the district. So I think it's really important, especially for the new board members, to learn what the role of the board is and what our role is. I mean, if there's a legal question, and I've, I've had legal questions, what we, what we do, and we, we'll learn this in, in onboarding, is you contact the superintendent, who contacts our, our law firm, and then we get a legal opinion. We, we got that on Massey, we got that on several other, um, issues that have risen throughout, throughout the, the term that I've been here. So, um, I would suggest that we, we figure out what our role is as the board, and then we, we jump into those sorts of things.
Okay, thank you. I'll give my own personal comments. Um, I totally understand where Mrs. Pappas is coming from. Um, and there are, there are times that I think it would make sense for the board to have counsel that it can call itself, and, um, I'll leave it at that, and we'll do a roll call vote on this as well. Mr. Cotton?
So just to be clear, we're not gonna-
I guess, I, is the motion to, because we don't have a, a name of a firm or an amount of a contract, is the motion just to-
Just to interview a firm.
And interview firms?
Right.
Over the course of a period of time?
That's correct.
But point of clarity, this, this wasn't on the agenda for tonight, the, the public didn't know about it. There sure, there certainly should be room for public comment. Why, why are we voting on this tonight when it's not even on the agenda?
A motion was made, and it was seconded. We've had discussion on it, and we can choose to go forward or not.
But for transparency's sake, the, the public doesn't know about this, they haven't had the opportunity to comment, why are we voting on something before it's even been made? I mean, for transparency's sake, shouldn't we put this on the agenda and vote on it when the public's had an opportunity to review this request?
Mr. Cotton, it's up to you.
Well, I think if once we get an engagement, then that'd have to be voted on. And so at that time, the public could, uh, comment.
Yeah, just as a point of order, my understanding of the board requests on the agenda was not to add items to the current agenda, but to request items be added to the next agenda for the next meeting. That, that was my understanding.
Uh, you can have a item come up at a board meeting. In a perfect world, you would have everything go through a two-step process. You can have an item, like all Mr. Cotton is asking, from what I'm understanding, is that we, um, look for a firm to represent board interests. And, um, it's not, to me, we're swapping dollars. If it's gonna go to the law firm that's representing the district, or law firm that's representing the board, it's, uh, I don't think this, this is an expense item, and it's, Mr. Cotton made the motion, and it's up for vote.
It, it certainly could be a expense item.
That, that's my concern, I don't think we know.
I, I mean, we have our attorney-
It's fine, we've had, we've made our comments. We have an item, a motion that's up, it's been seconded, it's been discussed. Now we're voting on it. End of story.
End of story? Is that how we're gonna do it, this, this term?
I'm sorry, Ms. Pappas?
Point of, uh, just a, a quick comment, we're just, we're, all we're voting right now is to begin a search. Then that, results of that search and recommendations would have to come before the board, and we'd have to vote on it.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it takes time to look through, those sort of things. We're just simply kickstarting the process. So there's going to be another vote. And certainly, if there's a cost issue or anything like that, that, that point, that, there's gonna be ample time for discussion and, and community input and, and a board vote.
Exactly. Can we take a vote, please, Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. St. John?
No.
Ms. Ju?
Yes.
Mr. Brumbaugh?
I, there, there are too many unknowns. I'm not opposed to the idea, but I feel like this is something that we need to explore more in normal order before we vote on it. So, I, I'm voting no.
Okay.
But I hope that over the coming meetings, we can hear more about, I mean, I, I don't know who is gonna conduct the search, how much it's gonna cost, what parameters we're going to put on it. I, I just feel like, um, I, I, I'm not opposed to the idea, I just feel like we need to define it a little bit better and discuss it. So, I, I think that the, um, yeah, I vote no.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
No.
And I'm a yes. It's four, three. Mr. Cotton, if you could please move forward with, uh, coming up with a memo for us on this process, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other board requests for information that we need to put on the docket? Okay, we move on to seven. Board workshop, onboarding relations, and roles and relations, January 25, 2023, 6:00 PM at Morningside. Next, we have public comments on non-action agenda items. I think the commenters know the drill. I'll read it anyway, I guess, this is, "We welcome comments and questions related to matters within the purview of the Board of Education. Prior to addressing the board, we recommend that speakers first discuss their topic and seek resolution with relevant staff and administrators culminating with the superintendent. The board will not discuss individual staff or student matters or pending litigation in this forum, and the chair will rule those comments out of order, as well as that commenters who use inappropriate language such as profanity or other language that disrupts the order of this meeting. Comments are addressed to the chair and are limited to three minutes. We are happy to discuss any matters further outside this formal meeting. When called to the podium, please state your name and city of residence." First, we have Terry Collins.
Good evening again, Terry Collins. So now we have new board leadership in place, what's next? You all have a monumental task at hand. The Plant Moran Audit, November Budget Update, put your projected end of year fund equity below 10% for the first time in many years. We still are waiting for an answer on what our October head counts are. I'd really like, hope you discuss that at the next meeting. You cannot afford to do what was done last year, which was nothing, and hope for better news to come for next school year. You must develop a plan to cut costs and increase revenue through student retention and attraction. Set measurable goals for yourselves and the administration and measure project, make, measure project, progress with meaningful data. But let's put that monumental task aside for just a moment, talk about the things you can do quickly to improve the relationship between the district and teachers, parents, and residents. For the teachers, act on the teacher survey, which plays student behavior and dis- For the teachers, act on the teacher survey, which place student behavior and discipline at the top of their list of concerns. Open a line of meaningful communication between the GPAA, teachers, and board, separate from the administration. Listen to what they are telling you is really going on in this district. This is a challenge to our teachers as well, who I believe have sat silently for much too long, afraid of what speaking out meant to their job security. Be bold, be honest, and speak freely without fear of repercussion. For the parents, return to a focus on academic excellence and meritocracy. Let's ensure that we celebrate achievement at our 2023 graduation ceremonies by including a valedictorian, a salutatorian, and each high school, and provide class rank for all graduating students. Millions of dollars of scholarship opportunities have been lost to Gross Point students and families since the elimination of valedictorian, salutatorian, and class rank. Please fix this immediately. Let's also take the administration's thumbs off the scale when it comes to voting for class officers, and allow our student bodies to choose their own class themes. If student voice is so important, then why aren't we listening when they tell us who they choose to represent them? And finally, for every resident with or without children in the school system, let's ensure property values are maintained by committing to a district which supports academic excellence at every opportunity. Attract and retain students to Gross Point schools by offering a value proposition that exceeds any other option available. Find a way to offer early childhood education across the district to ensure, once a student enters our district, they stay until graduation. Avoid spending critical infrastructure dollars on divisive projects like a free clinic. Sinking fund dollars are critical to address the needs of an aging district with old infrastructure. They cannot afford to be squandered on pet projects that do little to improve academic outcomes for our district. I wish you all a lot of luck, it's a great, it's a giant task at hand, and I think some of these things that can be done immediately would really show some confidence, or really provide some confidence to the people who put this new board in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Richard Schroder, please.
First of all, thank you all for your time and, and effort for what you put into this. You're doing it for nothing, and people do appreciate that. I was hoping on your next agenda, or in the future, you would reevaluate the agreement that has been put forward with Corwell on the clinic. As I said before, and I still say this, I, I'm not for, and I'm not against it, I'm not the specialist, I don't know what the number of clinics per student, per population should be in this area, but I am questioning the amount of money that is being spent on a clinic that is given to another healthcare corporation. It started off at about $300 a square foot, but we weren't happy with that, it's ballooned up to $500 a square foot. And I am pretty sure that there are gentlemen that had students go to this school, who are contractors, that can build this clinic for a whole lot less than $300 or even $250 a square foot. Unless you're putting granite on countertops, and you're putting in these beautiful marble bathrooms, I have no idea how you can bring this up to $500 a square foot. I've talked to contractors about this, they're boggled also. I know contractors that are building homes for between $200 and $275 a square foot, and they are not scrimping. And why in the world are we doing this for free for Corwell? They've got no money invested at all, and every penny that they're going to be spending on salary is going to be coming from the state of Michigan. So they are having no money in this, in this game at all. Is all you have to do is drop in three people a day, collect the money to pay for their salary from the state of Michigan, and they can harvest the patients all day long at our expense. Please put this on the agenda. And also, working in healthcare for 45 or 48 years, whatever it was, I know about shared relationships with legality. When something goes wrong in healthcare, as an employee, or as what you guys are, you're sharing a representative legally? Because I know that guy has said to me, yes, I'm looking out for the hospital, but I'm really looking out for you, as long as you do exactly what we tell you to do. But if you choose to think on your own, and you think you can protect yourself better, well, you go find your own representation. So you guys looking at representation for yourselves, I think it's a great idea. And it's going to be a wash financially, a dollar to this company, or a dollar to that company. Once again, thank you very much, and, and please put on the agenda to reevaluate this, this money that's being spent for Corwell. And it is being spent for Corwell.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Hopper.
Kate Hopper from Gross Point Farms, so nice to see all of you tonight. I was going to ask for something to be a first item of business, but following those two requests, I, I'll, I'll let you decide where to put this. As our newly-elected members of the GPPSS Board of Education, you come together tonight as representatives of one of our community's most important foundations, our public schools. You're taking on a number of very important responsibilities, including the duty of managing our district finances, and will face high expectations from an involved community. As a member of this community, may I suggest you collectively stand up for an important first order of business, proposing and taking to vote a complete forensic audit covering the years between the last taxpayer-approved bond and the date upon which, as you, as a new board, are assuming responsibility for the district. In doing so, you'll get off on the right foot from day one. You will assure GPPSS residents of a thorough accounting of recent expenditures, and will be responsible stewards, conscientious of the money with which you are charged to govern moving forward. Our community is looking forward to a board who will take the necessary steps from the very beginning to support our youth, our teachers, our schools, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopper. That concludes item eight, public comments on non-action items. We're on to item nine, other comments from board members and superintendent. Mr. Brumball?
I'd just like to start by welcoming, welcoming everybody back from a wonderful holiday season to a new year in Gross Point Public Schools. Congratulate our new trustees and our new officers. We have a substantial charge laid at our feet to safeguard not only the, you know, the standard of excellence that Gross Point Public Schools has established for more than 100 years, but chart what that path looks like to continue educational excellence in the Gross, Gross Point Public School system for the years to come. I think that we've had some really interesting discussions tonight, and some interesting ideas, I think bringing new energy to that is always a good thing. My only concern is for the preservation of normal order. Like I mentioned at a couple items, that I do think that it's important that, as one of my fellow trustees mentioned, that we give the public ample notice that we're going to have discussion of an item. We have opportunity to do research on it and understand the parameters of the idea put before the board, and that we have ample comment to discuss it before we vote. So I, I know that we're all eager to get to work and to do good by the, the kids in our community, but I would strongly urge everyone to take full advantage of the training that will be provided to us by Masby, formally later this month, and informally through other classes that are available, and, and follow normal order to make sure that we're, you know, fully engaging the community and making decisions after we've had the benefit of all of the research and resources available to us. So, welcome, and good luck. We have a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas.
I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, welcome all the new trustees to the board, and hopefully, we, we go forward. I know it seems like, you know, we have a little bit of, of change, but we have, all have a charge, we want to do the best for our students and our community, and I look forward to working with everybody together and, and having a wonderful 2023.
Thank you. Ms. Warden?
Yes, thank you. I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and welcome the teachers back, and hope that they have a, a great second semester. Also, wish the best of luck to our high school students who are going to be taking midterms next week. I also wanted to comment, I touched on this just a little bit, that we all take the onboarding that we are going to be trained in on January 25th very seriously. We have a very limited task on this board, and we're going to learn what our obligations are. And it's really important that people understand what the role of the board is and the role of each board member. My last comment is that I'm, I'm concerned that there are things that are already being voted on and discussed that have not been on the agenda. I take a lot of pride in the fact that transparency is, is been a very important part of this board, it's been a part of the board that I was on for the last two years, and the public has a right to know if we're voting on anything. And this idea that there's not going to be any cost with an extra attorney firm, another firm, is just not true. Having worked in a firm for 20 years, you can't even make a phone call to a law office without being charged at least $100, and that's probably a, a low estimate. So I would just start encourage our board that if you, if you want to vote on something, you want something to be part of, of the agenda, that you draft a resolution, you get support for it, and you put it on the agenda. That's what transparency is, and that's how our public is made aware of what we're going to be voting on. With that said, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cotton?
Just Happy New Year, and I thank my supporters for voting me in. I look forward to the next year, the next four years. I think things may be a little different than everybody's used to, but I think we'll get used to it, and maybe the chastising will stop at some point, or maybe not, but a Happy New Year.
Ms. St. John?
Yes, so I'm also looking forward to the January 25th onboarding, I think it's really important that we learn about our roles as board members before we try to shake things up too much, since the three of us are brand new. I've taken a lot of the Masby trainings, President Ismail actually suggested that I do some of the online trainings, so that was very helpful for me to understand what the role of a school board member is. And one of the things I was concerned about during this meeting was hearing that the administration and Board of Education have conflicting interests, and that's why we might need different legal representation, because from what I understand, the Board of Education is supposed to make sure that the district runs and educates children, and then our job is then to appoint the superintendent and have him hire everyone else, and they're supposed to enact that. There shouldn't be conflicting interests, and if there are, then we have a really big problem in the district. So that's really concerning to me to hear, but hopefully, I'll learn more in the next couple of weeks, and I really hope that for the next year, we have good leadership coming from the stage, so that the behavior in the audience is more appropriate, and that we don't have people shouting out and coming up to the podium, as we've had in the past, and saying hateful things. So let's make sure that we show that our community is a really great community to be in, and hopefully encourage more students to come here instead of embarrassing ourselves.
Ms. Jupe?
I also want to say Happy New Year, and I'm really thankful to be here, and thank you for all the people that got me to this position, so thank you. And I look forward to working with everyone on this board, I think we're going to maybe make some changes, and I also did the, the training that you're talking about, and I look forward to using that knowledge and working with all of you and making positive change for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dean?
Happy New Year, excited to work with the new Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Second of all, thank you for entrusting me with the presidency of this board, I'll do my best to keep the district, to get the district back to where I think a lot of people want to see it. I think this, we've got some good talent on this board, I'm excited about the skillsets that we've got on the board, and I look forward to working with you all. With that, we're adjourned.